Continuing the order, roll call.
Here.
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 All right, join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its power. Do you hear him?
Most graces have a problem with thinking for who you are. You are only God's people. We pray that you be with this meeting tonight, and all those present. I pray, Lord, that it lifts up to you that this meeting is held in a simple manner, and business is conducted in a way that you want. Forgive us, our beloved Christ.
First item on the agenda is to approve tonight's agenda. And I know there's amendments requested.
I wanted to put the stormwater situation, the flood, on there.
Okay, that'll be number nine. Anything else? Do I hear a motion to approve as amended?
Still.
Got a motion by Mark, do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Erica, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, like a sign, and that is approved. Next item on the agenda is the June 24th minutes, do I hear a motion to approve?
Still.
Got a motion by MC, do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Erica, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, that's approved. Next item is financial reports. On the city financials, I'm gonna ask that we cable these for one more month, do I hear a motion?
Still.
Got a motion by MC, second by Mike, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, like a sign, that's approved. Next item's the water and sewer financials, and I'm gonna make the same request there, do I hear a motion?
Still.
Okay, got a motion by Mike, do I hear second?
Second.
Second by MC, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, and that's approved. Next item is department reports, fire.
Um, the other night during the flood, we had thirteen swift water calls. We picked three people out of the water over on Fields. We cleared numerous other calls and houses that were being flooded, but no injuries on that. First part of July, we did several, on 4th, we did several parades, one was in Scissor Tail. So, it's been a busy month. So, any questions on their report or anything?
Have they give you a time when they're gonna start filling that hole?
They came and looked at it today, I think Will's guys are, I think they needed more gravel. They've washed a bunch of gravel away. So, around the driveway, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're not gonna put gravel in there, are they? That was dirt and sod.
Yeah, they're getting it, they're gonna pull the gravel out of that, hopefully. But they came and looked at it today. And then the drain on the east side's blocked, so we'll have to blow it out. It's full of gravel.
Any other damage?
Huh?
Any other damage from the flood?
No. Uh, it came up to our bay door, a little bit of water came in on the wash bay side, which it's got full drains there, so we have no damage. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks. Next is police.
Aside from what you, the stats that you have there, obviously, the, like the fire department said, the rain, we were all out, I came out on that, and, uh, never seen anything like that. I've been through all the other floods that we've had, and this one just came, came, as soon as, as fast as it came in, it left. Um, the creeks and everything went down so fast, um, but there were several roads blocked. One police car, not ours, got stuck out in the middle of it, went dead, they blew it engine up. And then, uh, just picking up the cars, like out there in the mayor and Kim's subdivision out there, a car that was parked at one end of the subdivision, ended up out over on Clayton, all twisted up. Uh, a truck got washed down. So, it was, a lot of vehicles getting towed, changed a couple of tires for some people. Down here in the south end of town by Pavcon, in that stretch, there was huge, huge rocks in the road. And, uh, when the water recessed, people thought they could drive over them, and, you know, one, one car had three flats. Uh, so, we couldn't help him very much, but get him a wrecker. But, uh, uh, yeah, we changed a couple of tires, and thankfully, nobody was hurt, and we got through that. But you guys have any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Next is planning commission report.
Good evening. So, planning commission, obviously, met last night. You know, we had one of these off months with the start of the month. But, we had to postpone the meeting earlier in the month, so we kinda had a double meeting yesterday evening. But the planning items that y'all have looked at previously was the preliminary flat for the Trillium subdivision. This one was tabled, we still got a few items outstanding on it that we wanna work through. So, we're still kinda looking at that from the engineering and design standpoint. The track split for also the Trillium Development Company, this is a different piece of property. Aguilar property, planning commission voted unanimously to approve that lot split last night. We had a replat for Parker Estates, top two properties, this is down on Peak and Ravine. This was taking a two-plus acre property that's owned R1, and splitting it into two one-acre parcels. No rezoning, everything met the requirements of the code. Um, the ranch subdivision that we've been working on, that was a preliminary flat, we've had it requested to be tabled by the applicant, they got their engineering comments back from McClelland and our staff comments. And so, they're kinda working through all of those requested changes and all that fun stuff. Uh, we had a lot split for JCB Properties, this is on Pepper Grass Path, this is, uh, part of the Scissor Tail subdivision where a lot was combined, two lots were combined into one. And the applicant that currently owns it is requesting to take this back into two original lots that was preliminary planted in the City of Rogers. So, that was also approved. And then we've got a lot line adjustment for Dancing Rabbit up off of Ozark Acres. They had three tracks on this piece of property, one of them currently has a home on it. There was another one that was about three acres that was vacant, and then like 12 acres, and they're kinda making the three acre and the 12 acre closer to the same size, so just a line adjustment there, no new lots. And then, of course, we had the Master Street Plan and Future Land Use Plan update last night, and the Planning Commission voted unanimously to affirm that, recommend City Council. Approved that tonight, so. And then on your July City Council, you know, is all we have is the MSP and future land use maps that we have out to discuss. And then the work session items that we had last night was a, the rezoning, which is a BZD for the C and K Engineering Project up on Ford and 264. They've submitted, more than, resubmitted their zoning packet, and so, we're gonna kinda continue through that process with them, looking at the property, you know, what they want their zoning to look like and things like that. We have a track split for Osage Meadows Development. This is the one at the end of Wallace, where it tees into 112 on the west side of 112. And they are working on all of the preliminary plat stuff for that subdivision and development project. They also have a large track that's commercial on one end of it, that they're wanting to split off to go ahead and kinda expedite some development on it. And, uh, it's not affecting their preliminary plat that they have on the rest of the property. And then we have two other items that were mostly for update with the Planning Commission. Kinda just letting them know where we're at, site development plan for a Barnes mixed-use project on the north main up here. It's been about a year since the applicant submitted that and got their conditional approval. We've been working through engineering, you know, staff comments and stuff, and that time with them, they've submitted another round of submissions. Engineering's looking at it right now, we're gonna get back to them. And then the Scissor Tail preliminary plat, they submitted, um, their updates with RW Rogers Water and Utilities and some of their other items that they were working on, so kind of a update with Planning Commission on that. Both those items really don't require any action from the Planning Commission, it's kind of a general talking point, update, letting them know where we're at on it. That is all that I have for the Planning Commission updates. Obviously, we'll have the Master Street Plan and everything here in a little bit, unless y'all have any other questions or comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the June Water and Sewer Department Report.
Will, you wanna come forward, please? Yeah, if you wanna go over the report, you can, I just wanna say that we see a trend that water loss went down some, this month, so that's a good trend to see. Go ahead.
Um, so, looking over the open work orders, as you can see, we have five open right now. Set the meter for a builder, we've just gotta dig out the box, set it. The sewer main extension, we were waiting on an easement rededication, that was signed today. So, we will begin work on that as soon as we get, break in our schedule, so probably end of the week, early next week. So, something interesting, we had two taps that we suspected were leaking on Main Street. We dug up one, and it took us about seventy feet worth of digging to find it. And in that process, we uncovered three of the joints where the pipes actually connect. All of those had water sitting around them, but they weren't actively leaking. So, what that indicates to me is it's a pressure leak, so at night, when no one's using water, pressure of the pipe builds, and then it leaks then. And that's towards the dead end, down at the end of Main Street, which subsequently, we also have really high pressures down there. And so, that, I actually printed out a map for y'all, that's about one mile worth of pipeline that's likely leaking at most of those bell joints. Which could be a significant source of water loss. The good news is, when RDOT comes through and relocates that line, the majority of that will be replaced. We're still investigating one other tap that we suspect is leaking, and then we are still working on Allen Street. We have all the main line laid in the ground, we just have to make three more taps, and then bore those service lines to the meters, and then chlorinate and pressure test, and we'll wrap that project up. So, that's all I have, unless y'all have questions.
Thank you for all your hard work, I know in my neighborhood, there was a significant water leak, and you guys were out there getting that fixed.
Yes.
I mean, that morning. So, that's fully repaired, it looks like, correct?
Yes, and that one is actually interesting because the saddle broke, and so, that's probably been leaking for years, based on the damage to the saddle. Not sure how it got skipped over for the McCammon Creed report, but that's likely been leaking for well over a year, based on what we saw. So, that was a significant leak that got fixed.
Your response time was amazing, you and your crew, so thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Did you have water damage in the building?
No. In our building, you said? No.
Dug the gravel out the low water bridge, though?
Sorry?
You dug the gravel out at the low water bridge?
Yes, out of the culverts, the, uh, we dug that out on Friday.
I, I have one more question. With all of the things that we approved for the water loss and trying to mitigate it, maybe that's a Daniel question. When does that, those project, when do those projects start to be looking at the pressures and those three things that we approved?
It's already moving forward, you approved it at the last meeting, and we're moving forward with the study right now.
Oh, so it's, okay, good, all right, thank you so much.
Correct me, Daniel, it's, it should be done by December?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is engineers report.
I'm gonna piggyback on the water and sewer, just a couple of items, you've got the notes in front of you from the Water and Sewer Committee meeting that was held last week. One thing to note, everything is generally on the water and sewer side, unchanged from the last meeting. But we did receive approval from ADQ today on the closure plan associated with plant number one and plant number two wastewater treatment plans. So, we can move forward with removal of the sludge there and abandonment of the easements for the agreement with the landowner. So, that'll begin moving forward now as well. Also, in your packet, I brought that for informational purposes, now the preliminary drawings for the public works and storage improvements that we talked about by the, uh, or at the water and sewer yard, if you will. Several pages in there included in the packet that I put in front of you as well. As far as the other engineering items, really no change on any of the current projects from the last, uh, last month's report. We, we are prepared to talk somewhat about the drainage, Erica had asked us to, uh, show some videos, but since that was added to the end of the agenda, that we just wanna wait until item number eight to discuss that.
Actually, um, there's people here to do public comments on that. I didn't, I didn't know it was gonna be added, 'cause the mayor asked you about that, and you said it'd be covered in Daniel's report, so there was no need to add Brentwood to it, so... Is that okay with you, Mayor?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so that way they can say their public comments and not have to stay here until item number nine?
Okay.
If you wouldn't mind.
Well, as we all know, you, you may be able to speak up as well, uh, but from, I don't know an exact amount of rainfall that fell specifically here in Cave Springs, uh, but I'm aware of a job site just up the road at X and A, that over a three-year, or three-hour period, five and a half inches of rain fell. And so, if we were just to equate, I know it was at least that amount, based on reports that I've heard. If I pull our, pull out of our drainage manual, to try to understand what type of event are we looking at over that three-hour period, it will be in excess of a 100-year rainfall event. Or another way to say that is have the probability, or 1% probability, to happen at any given time. So, that's kind of the size of rainfall event that we were looking at. I'll start off, would you like to start off with photographs, I've got three photographs that you sent, Erica?
Photographs would be great, so they can, so the council can acclimate themselves to exactly where this is. Our Brentwood fence along Bird Eye was just replaced, so you'll see a new fence there. And that property owner sent me pictures. That's the video. That's looking at the property where it's, the water's coming in from Brentwood, you can actually see my house down there. I lost the panels at the end, but, um, the first picture shows the amount of water coming in. The Cox utility line easement is dug up again, it drove, but with that fence that's broken right there, it drove one of those fence panels, and my three fence panels, all the way down Bird Eye, up into the farmland. And some other neighbors lost them too, but could you go to the next picture?
All right, and, of course, we're looking generally south here, the water flowing to the south, and Bird Eye is located on the other side of this fence, right here.
So, that's the water that crosses 264, hits that empty lot, and comes into Brentwood. So, that amount of water, this is my concern, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to take an even kelter road here, even though my property was damaged. My concern is, I read somewhere, and if Chief Jordan's here, please correct me if I'm wrong, it only takes 12 inches of water to wash away a car. We are so blessed that we did not end up with a car in our yard, because that much water is crossing 264. How does RNOT, RDOT, not do anything, or, or say something to Lowell for putting all of this on us? This doesn't even include, within, within our detention pond, the detention pond overflowed so much, it went up, it crossed Rustic Creek, and, and got into some houses up there, three houses took on water. But Brentwood is not meant to drain Lowell, but I just wanted the council to see. And this landowner is here, so I'm speaking as a council member, not as a landowner. We are really blessed, we did not have a car in our yard with that much water. And then, um, I think there were a couple other photos. So, so you can see it goes beyond that property owner's fence, and it, the extent of it, and that's that empty lot. And I know McClelland looked into it, to fix the whole problem, is over a million dollar fix, which is absolutely ridiculous, and buying land in another town, which we've already talked about it. My thing is, can we approach RDOT and slow the flow? Because as it is rushing in, it's gonna wash away a car eventually, it hasn't happened yet. And it has caused so much damage alone, but my big thing is, as a council member, safety. And then, um, and then you can see the videos of how fast it's rushing, and those were taken from my property. Because you can see the whole event. And it caused more property damage on the property below me now, that easement is dug up under their fence. And they're about to lose their fence, just like I did the first time before I was on council. So, that's looking, you can see all the way up, one, two, two houses up is where the water comes in. But the sheer velocity of it, and the amount, I don't know how we can't take a different approach to slow water or things like that, and granted, since that box stock was put in, I haven't seen, the, the trail was there because Cox didn't come back and fill my hole again after it settled. But I haven't seen water in my yard, the box stock was doing its job, but to have this happen again, with the amount of flow and velocity of it, um, I wanted you all to see, and I wanted to talk about it at the council, if we could. And I know, Daniel, you don't have the magic, that, that would be the Cox communication line that was washed out.
Daniel, go, go ahead, say it.
So, that, that was my whole, my whole point, 'cause I know multiple homeowners are here to talk to you as well, and I'm not going to say their comments. This is just my blanket council comment, as I would say with anybody that would ever come to me. Because I don't ever want my integrity questioned.
My next door neighbor is stuck at the Church of Christ down here, a half hours, because of flooding. I've got a friend that I go to church with, he lives in a subdivision that's in Ro, in Rogers, actually, is my understanding of it. But it's across from that detention pond on that second phase that built that deep hole there and everything. But all that water from the, up the hill, come down, filled that, it got within three feet of his house. Pushed up in a, a fence and running down that creek. The main problem, or part of the problem I see is building these subdivisions, once you figure in there and you destroy all the grass, and I know people want them here, there's, there's no way to stop the runoff. This may be a 100-year flood, or more than 100 years, but we had one four years ago too. So, we've got to be prepared for these things, and that includes cleaning out these wet weather creeks down through here. I've brought that up before, I know you're talking about private property, but something's got to be done. I don't care what it is, it's got to be fixed. Safety of our citizens is number one, and our property, to me, anyway. I don't know about the rest of them, but that's the way I feel.
There is one more concern about this with Brentwood, if that land on the other side of 264 gets developed, where do you think they're gonna dump our water? They're gonna dump it, like Ridgewood, 'cause I'm sure we got some Rid, Ridgewood in, water in there too, 'cause it goes under 264. Probably a joint's what crosses 264. So, is that something that you can keep on, the, the city can keep on their radar, to make sure that we're informing? I don't know how that works, since it's not our town. But, I don't want more put on Brentwood.
We're gonna have the same thing coming down the road.
Yeah, to kinda give you an, an idea of how your drainage manual is set up, conveyance structures within the public right of way, so any of the pipes, box culverts, or anything that's placed across the road or along the road, those are designed for a 10-year rainfall event, to convey that rainfall. Anything in excess of that should flow down the street and generally stay within the public right of way. Detention ponds are designed for a maximum of a 100-year rainfall event. So, uh, part of this is, is reevaluating and, and wanting, making a determination if you wanna make an adjustment to your drainage man. That's generally customary with those rainfall events, with what we have, or what we see in this area and beyond. But one of the things we do consider as we're reviewing those developments, we do know where the challenges are, drainage challenges are. When those developments go in, that has to be taken into account, or the developer has to take that into account whenever they're designing those, uh, those improvements. But generally speaking, same with RDOT, they have a rainfall event they design to, they're not planned to design to a 100-year rainfall event. So, it's, it's gonna be very difficult to manage, uh, those type of situations, uh, they're extreme situations, if you will.
But we've had two in four years.
That's correct, and that's, that's all I'm saying, it's on average, a 1% chance it can be looked at in that manner, a 1% chance.
Where's the sludge, if somebody did die, that 1% chance? Your place got flooded. They washed pieces of their, of their, uh... Logs, or pieces of telephone pole that you had washed down to the fire station.
Maybe I'm sure he's been up and begged the council to either clean it, let me clean it, or RDOT clean it, somebody clean it. But this would not have happened if the culverts and those creeks had been submerged, and it was cleaned out. If that were being cleaned out, you know, went through, now we got RDOT, so we can add that culvert, because it is muffled up on, uh, like well, I don't know if they're aware of that.
I didn't see that.
It is muffled, that, that culvert, it's up on top, and it's washed down on both sides of that culvert, with that water and rush over the top of, of the, of the. So, they're sitting out there today, especially, and they were out there on Friday as well. So, I don't know if that's a city problem, it could be.
It's actually RDOT property at this point.
But lots of, you have to repair that, RDOT has to repair that, that, maybe they're aware, it's a, it's a problem. So, I, I would like to know what they're planning on doing. So, I know that the citizens have called as well, 'cause they flooded their middle building out across the street, that, or you're all pretty enough. I'm asking, I'm, I'm asking. Kim, I only recall one time, to be honest, that you asked, and that was like a month or two ago. I, and I, we heard you, and it was passed on to the mayor, so I've only heard you ask once, and I thought everything was taken care of, but maybe it should've gone on the updates.
And I went out and looked, and it was on the RDOT, uh, right at the mouth, the tree that up down was at the, the large one was right there at the mouth of the, uh, the RDOT, um, box culvert, and I reported it to RDOT. And it's, it's on them, and the private, the rest of it is private property. If you wanna clean it, you can, the city can't use, uh, public funds for private, not by me.
You, you told me that we had to get a permit from Corvus. You, you told me that we had to get a permit from Corps of Engineers.
I said that we can't as a city and the engineers stated, when we do stuff on, on there, we have to go to Corps of Engineers. I don't know if individuals do or not. Do you?
As far as individuals, I don't know. But the permitting process goes as a municipality, we would have to, uh, look at SWIP. And there's a potential that you would have to go and, uh, further on the permitting side.
And that would be if it was already in our, in our, uh, project because it was in our, our, our property.
So somebody dies in a flood, who gets blamed for that?
The property owners are responsible for taking care of the, their ditches, if I understand that right.
She did that.
Justin.
That creek is in her ditch?
It is. It's a, whether you call it a creek or a ditch, they're responsible for their own. They, the city can't go onto private property and use city funds to benefit private individuals. Am I wrong about that?
It's a difficult situation because you have, uh, you know, if, if, if there is a threat on a, on a piece of property that's gonna imminently hurt somebody, uh, the, uh, city has, what's called police powers to protect health, safety, welfare. Uh, on the other end of the spectrum, uh, cities can't improve private property. We can't go on private property and, and, and improve. We can't do, go on somebody's property, prune trees or, uh, you know, clean out drains and, and those sort of things. So this is something that sort of falls in between. Mike reached out to me, um, last week about this and we had a discussion on the phone. Uh, completely understand the frustration because we have something which we feel is contributing to, to the issue. May, may not solve it, but certainly having some contributory effects. And so I told Mike, um, that I, I was gonna do a bit of a survey. I know some other cities in Arkansas that have gone through some fairly significant flooding issues. Hot Springs being one of them, uh, that, uh, put in some more rigorous standards. And I was gonna look and see what type of regulation they have on cleanup requirements. Uh, try to get a, uh, some of those to bring back to the August work session. Uh, so we can take a look at those and see, see what type of things could we do.
And I know that with Hot Springs, when we were looking at, at a drainage utility, they did that. They're one of the cities that have drainage utility. And they have gone on, or they have had a lot of the drainage areas dedicated to the city. So it's the city property, so they can go on to them and clean it up. But they've got a huge, uh, tax structure and they spend a lot of money that frankly, we don't have. And it, it, uh, when we looked at it, it was very cost prohibitive. There's only like five cities in the state that has those. Uh, and none of the small towns have. When I saw Chris Daniel, can you go over those stats again that you gave me just a few minutes ago that you gave? How many inches, said, or how fast?
What was recorded by contractor at X and A is five and a half inches over a three hour period. And if I look in your drainage manual, that equates, uh, to a 100 year rainfall event will be 5.16 inches, uh, in that same time period. So it's in excess of a 100 year rainfall event.
Has that happened before?
Yes.
I've been in this city since 1992. I have never seen it this bad. You know why? Because we have a stormwater management guideline. Having it, implementing it are two different things. I think, I don't think honestly they're being implemented correctly. That's just my opinion. And if you, if the more subdivision, I'm in business of, you know, I'm in real estate business. I like subdivision. But if you put subdivision is without implementing the stormwater management like it should be and having it and designing it is one thing, implementing it is another thing. I don't think that implementation is there. We just talked about this public water. And I'm gonna say that, uh, not because it's my property, it's next to the public water. But public water, uh, area, the building is in a flood zone. You just asked Will and he said it wasn't flooded. My place that's next to it is not in a flood zone and it got flooded. Do you know why? My understanding is because when that low water bridge was adjusted, they raised it. They put a small pipe in it, that pipe cannot, and then the pipe gets, as soon as they came and cleaned it, the water will start going there. So we can, we can blame everything we wanna blame. But we have to be honest with ourselves and start looking at what can we do to change it? Instead of, okay, it's in 100 year. I don't care 100 years it is or 200 years. What can we do to improve it? Why is it that a place that is not in flood zone get flooded, the one that is is not? Is it because they're building on it continuously disturbing the land and then the water comes to the neighbor? And I asked that and I have brought that to Mr. Mayor. Uh, officers of what, uh, Kim said one time or whatever they said. I think I have brought that at least four or five times to the council over the years. And it doesn't matter. I'm, I mean, I, it's my property and I don't wanna, I don't wanna be taking advantage of city coming here. But at the same time, by God, I have had damage thousands of dollars. Again, I got my farm, but I never had water coming in. They took the barns. I mean, I had at least 30, 40,000 dollar damage. If you come over, I'll show it to you. I think Mike went to Dr. Dr. today. He, he saw it. It had never happened. And then Will's assistant, the staff come in and clean that hole, it'll start going. Designing that small hole was not the right thing. And I'm gonna say it until you guys fix that. If you don't fix that, and after I'm asking Islam, I'm not talking you, meaning you, meaning the city, Mr. Mayor. Then how, how can I, how can the rest of the folks that are here have the comfort level with the coun, with the city council that they're gonna take care of it? We can say it easy, but a lot of water that came in, it was dirt that was washed down from that phase two was coming down. You can go in there, it still is by low water bridge. You can go there and look at it. Because what do we do before they start this subdivision? Do they work on a detention pond or do they break the ground and then? The, those are things that we need to look at and see how we can improve it. Honestly, there is room for improvement. We need to look at it. We're not in the same small city that there was like 1,000 people, 500 people. And it's getting bigger. We have more subdivision in there. So we need to look at that stormwater management, see how can we improve it? And how can we implement it that making sure it's getting done? We love the builders. At the same time, we wanna make sure we don't, those other folks that are been here for a long time, they're, you know, they're paying for it. So I think that low water bridge there, that's a good example of that it wasn't done correctly. And I'm, I'm gonna say it until it's fixed. That's all.
But, um, Mayor, I think I asked for that to stay on the updates, if I recall correctly. Bright Street?
About the right street.
Yeah, that's your street, right?
Yes.
I think I asked for it to stay on updates until it was resolved.
Okay.
And it's not on updates.
Okay.
I recall saying that.
As a reminder too, uh, you all adopted a new drainage manual, uh, that's back in, I can't remember now, several years ago now. Not a lot has been built to that new, more comprehensive drainage manual that, uh, you adopted. We have had some, but a lot of the, the areas that we're talking about, were not directly contributed to that specific drainage manual. So we'll see some improvements I can give to the mayor and see how downstream from Allen's Mill fared. Uh, and I could also, if y'all would like, we could take a look at the homes that did end up with water in them and compare it to the floodplain map as a starting point, just to see where that, what that looks like.
I, I just wanna make sure the implementation part of it gets done correctly too. We need to look at it. How do we implement it? Who's checking it? Who's making sure it's done correctly? Is it something after it's done, we're gonna go stay there, okay, it's done? Or are we having people go through the section, make sure? Because we have so much subdivision built and so much land that's gonna be saturated. There is no room for it to go. How are we gonna deal with that? These are things that we owe it to our citizens to do it. I really think so, Mr. Mayor. I, forget about me, forget about my land, forget about my house, look at everybody else. And if somebody gets hurt, one person, because we didn't do our job, shame on us. And I feel guilty myself about it.
We have the Hillcrest one, that was a prime example of using the new drainage manual and it didn't, it, well, Daniel, you knew how that went. It didn't go and, and homes were, water is being put on homes. It shouldn't have been put on homes. And also it's being put on bird eye, where I don't agree with it being put on bird eye. So I think there's, there's more to be done.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, I do have one more question. If these, obviously my development's already planted, his land's already planted. Is there anything to do? Is there any different approach on the work, on the areas that are being flooded? That the city can do to, to help mitigate, well, especially in Brentwood, the rapid flow of water? Cause before we just looked at a fix. Is there anything?
Well, probably the easiest thing to look at, this comes from, uh, my first thought is, do you have a budget, uh, that you may, could approve that we could look at and try to determine what could be done? Typically, when you look at drainage, I wanna caution you to be very careful. You need to start downstream and work your way upstream. If you start in the, in the middle of the project or you start on the upstream side, you stand a chance of just moving a problem just further to the south. So you have to be calculated in the manner of which you do those improvements. So you don't move a problem or, uh, increase the problem, uh, downstream.
Exactly.
Well, it's already increased downstream because Hillcrest is now putting water on bird eye. Whereas we didn't have Hillcrest before. So, um, I don't know.
I got a question. There's an Arkansas law that says you cannot change the natural flow of water. Is that not with these subdivisions?
Now, with the subdivisions, um, I think we can all agree that there is more water. When you put rooftops in, pavement, there is more water. The reason behind the detention ponds is to release that water at the maximum rate it was pre-development. So it's just gonna last over a longer period of time. So you have more water out there, more volume, you're just not releasing it any faster. That's the design of one of the detention ponds.
Anything else? Attorney's report.
Counsel, number, uh, good evening. Number of the items, uh, that was on my list, we've already talked a little bit about. So, uh, I'll mention that, uh, upcoming in the, uh, August work session, uh, we have a number of items, uh, coffee shop lease being one, franchise ordinances, and liquor license, liquor tax, uh, ordinance. I think we talked a little bit about all those at the last work session. And I told you I'd be working on, uh, kind of comprehensive drafts of the, uh, uh, liquor license and tax. And also would bring you forward the revised franchise ordinances. And, um, connecting with, with MC, he is going to assist with some advice on, uh, the coffee shop lease. So that'll all be coming forward, uh, at the work session. And we got another week. Uh, so that's good, cause we got, uh, a lot of preparation of items for that. Uh, otherwise, I was, I was also gonna mention what Mike and I had talked about on the drainage. And I'll have some, try to put together some information for, uh, for the work session on, on that as well. And then, uh, lastly, the, uh, the golf course, uh, termination of the, of the plants. Uh, Daniel covered that in his, in his update. So are there any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is clerk treasurer's report. Next item is the mayor's report. And I didn't formally prepare anything tonight, but during the, the flood the other night, which my mother-in-law, uh, has electronic device measuring water. And she claimed we got over five inches in about an hour and a half. But regardless, it was a lot of rain. We had water in a lot of places. Uh, I managed to come up to City Hall and go out and see a little bit of the damages, see the guys in action, was really impressed. We had state police, uh, the county sheriff's office, our, did see an ambulance go by a time or two. And I saw a couple of trucks I didn't quite expect from, uh, the, uh, looked like National Guard out here. And then in addition to that, I s-
That was Hyphen PD.
That was what?
Hyphen PD.
Oh, Hyphen PD?
Yes.
Okay. Well, there were two or three of those with strange lights in the tan color that were large trucks. And, uh, then we, I did see some of our firefighters in action. The police officers for Cave Springs in action. And there was a lot of work going on in a hurry. I, I got home at 2:30. I know a lot of these guys got home at five or later. And there were vehicles being pulled out. There were people being helped in, in all, from all the different departments. And they all came together, worked together well. And it was really impressive to see. It's a shame they were put in the position and it's a shame that we had such a huge, uh, rain event. But at the same time, it was really good to see the guys in action and the great job they did. So, thank you. And, um, next item is public comments. Anyone? State your name and, uh, where you live and go ahead and make your comment.
Uh, my name is Peter Smith and I live over in the Brentwood subdivision. Uh, so about four years ago, I got to speak to the council on this as well. Um, we have, uh, as Councilwoman Erica had mentioned, um, with all the flooding coming through, uh, about four years ago, we had a mushroom top, uh, the drainage put in there. Um, and it's helped some, but we have what we call a river that comes through our backyard. Councilwoman Erica mentioned, comes over from Lowell, comes through, uh, uh, our neighbors behind us, through their yard, through our yard, into Erica's yard, and then back out over the street into Lowell. Um, we call those rivers and we've had, we've been in that house for five years. We've had about six rivers come through the back of our house. As Councilman Mike said, 200 year events within four years. I mean, that's, it, it, it's hard to kind of fathom that. And because we have those rivers coming through, we can't do things like, uh, like landscaping. We can't put any, uh, uh, a sitting place or pergola because it'll probably get washed away. Um, our weed service and lawn service, um, washed away. Uh, flower beds, uh, anything landscaping that way washed away. Um, we've had to replace our fence now, the one that connects to Erica's yard. This will be the second time in four years that we've had to replace the same fence. Um, I, I honestly, I, I don't know what to do anymore. Uh, I don't know what, what approach to take. Um, we tried going to Lowell, excuse me, the, the city of Cave Springs tried going to the city of Lowell saying, will you help us? Can, is there anything you can do? The water's coming from your city into our city and wrecking, you know, the residence property. Is there anything that you can do? And they basically said, in so many words, not our city, not our problem. So at this point, I, you know, you know, we, we've mentioned all the, the, you know, the issues, yes, to personal property damage like that. But now we're looking at it from a safety perspective too. Um, I, in that little neighborhood where that river flows through, uh, we have children, grandchildren. Um, and yes, this was a terrible, terrible, hopefully once in a lifetime flood because we've never seen rain that high. But because we keep getting those rivers through our backyard, um, pets, small children, if anybody steps a foot out there, they're washed away. They're washed into the ravine that dug out into Erica's yard. Um, and, and then at that point, it's, it, does that become negligence on, we know there's a problem, we know it's coming from Lowell and nothing is happening about it? So, um, that's, that's all I have to say. But, uh, again, I just urge the, the city to take some sort, additional measures now to, for safety purposes, for, uh, to, for safety purposes, for the sake of our homes and our property, to try something else. Because what we've tried so far has not worked. And yes, we know that these are terrible once-in-a-lifetime floods, but we have now had multiple of those floods. And the solutions we tried before are still not working. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is John Longinnotti. I live on Brown Road. And Randy, we've spoken a few times. I remember, you know, we bought our house back in June of 2016. We're on the trough of our street. We're the lowest house on the road. And, you know, you talk about this 1% chance for this flood. Every year, I have to put down flood barriers on my property to keep from flooding. This is the third time now that I've had water inside of my house. And even on moderate rainfall days, I mean, I have videos going back to 2017 of standing water up against my garage doors, up against the house this last storm. I had two feet of water up against the side of my house. And I'm not in a flood zone. I've looked at the FEMA maps. My original degree was in emergency management. And so I know to look for this stuff when I'm going to buy a house. And there was nothing indicated when I'm going to buy the house. And even our neighbors who have been there since before 2003 have never seen the amount of rain that we've got. And the only change since then is the amount of development that's been going on in Cave Springs. And so basically, and my driveway and my neighbor's driveway are the only two driveways that are sloped down the hill instead of towards the street. And of course, the only drainage ditch on our street is on the west side of my house, which gets about 10% of the water. The other 90% comes from the east side, which goes across my neighbor's driveway into my driveway and comes down my street. And comes down my driveway into my house, into my front yard. One of my neighbors back there was actually with us at about 10:45, 11 o'clock that night, helping me control the flood. I mean, we were calling everybody we could. I was outside my neighbor's house yelling for help. So at one point, I had, all I could find was some four-inch corrugated drain tubing that at best, I was trying to fill it with water from the street so it would lay up against our curb and driveway to try to divert some of that water. Some of that got washed away. I mean, we were grabbing anything heavy we could find to try to dam up the water. And at one point, I kind of got worried because I was in front of my garage with one of my flood barriers. And a bolt of lightning cracked around us. And I took a shock from it, not knowing if it's from, you know, it could have been from my air conditioning unit because I had about, one of my units was about almost six inches from being underwater. But it was enough of a joke that I was worried that my neighbor back there, my wife and another one of our neighbors may have been laid out across our driveway with the lightning strike. Because we were out there in the middle of it, just doing everything we could to try to save the house. And it finally got to the point where the water was inside my wife's site. We lost, just come inside, we're done. So I kind of had to give up. But it kind of felt like that scene in Titanic where the two couples laying on the bed and the water's just coming in. So that's kind of the situation we were in. I've already torn out drywall, trim, I've torn out carpet into our closet, into our master bedroom. This is the third time I've done this. And it's just water coming off the street. I mean, even moderate rainfalls, I mean, like I said, I have videos going back years of showing the same thing where I've had to buy, I've had to become an engineer. I've had to rebuild my fences a foot and a half off the ground so water can flow out. I've had to regrade the easement, the city easement, to allow the water to run away from my house. And even in this storm, that wasn't enough. So I don't know what needs to happen. But Randy, when I talked to you, it was probably around 2017, 2018. You had told me that the engineer said it was going to be about $102,000 to fix just my problem. And I realize that sounds kind of selfish to fix my problem. But I was like, all right, let's go, let's fix it. Because it's not my responsibility to deal with the street runoff. Because the storm drain on the west side of the house is totally useless. It does nothing for anybody. Except redistribute some rock in the backyard. That's really about all it does. I mean, my deck, I needed to go in there and add a lot more dirt, concrete, rocks to replace what's been missing. I had about a 25-pound block of cement that was moved by that water about 75 yards. And on one side, you know, when that lightning strike happened, I was kind of worried that, okay, let's say, and like I said, I got up enough to go look to see if anybody was laid out dead across my driveway when that lightning hit. And I thought to myself, my wife was up there too. So if, God forbid, lightning hit, we all die. My little girls come outside that are seven-five looking for us. They would have been swept away by that water. Because it was coming down hard enough that even when I was on my hands and knees, I was sliding backwards from it. So that is, I shall understand why one of the drainage ditches was put up where it was, why the builders were allowed to build our driveway in such a way that it just puts all the water down our property. And like I said, I've been dealing with this since we bought the house in 2016. I built the privacy fence that first spring storm we got in 2017, house flooded. And so that's when I tore, I've torn down my fence three times now to allow more water to run off. So I don't know what I need to do besides getting an attorney involved or something because this is, it shouldn't be happening. I'm in a neighborhood, I'm not in a flood zone. And like I said, the only thing that's changed is just overbuilding. The Neve subdivision didn't exist when that house was built. Hickory Creek didn't exist when that house was built. So now there's nowhere for any of that water to go besides my neighbor's property across the street from us. I can see the river that runs down his property. And then all that water that's already on the street is adding on to that and then coming and pouring over. There's nothing I can do about it. I mean, my flood barriers, even at 600 pounds a piece, when I get those fully inflated, that couldn't have stopped any of this. And like I said, this, he says 100-year rainstorm or 1% chance we get that. This has been every year, every year. I mean, I've had first responders drive past my house in the middle of the flood. I'm carrying sandbags, throwing it up there. And no one even stops to help. We had one guy finally stop and say, hey, you need something? It's like, yeah, my house is flooding. Just kind of got back in his car and left. All right, protect and serve. So I don't know what I'm expected to do. I mean, I can't sell the house. I mean, a fucking river runs through it. I've had so much damage in there, like, how am I going to sell this? I can't move. Of course, nobody can move. But I don't know what I'm expected to do. I can't, I'm not an engineer. There's only so much I can chop up my property to try to manage this water. The only thing I can think to do is tear up the road myself to start adding channels that I can run down to somewhere that's useful, the size of my property. That might not be legal. But that might be the next step. So I don't know, guys. I need some help. I need some help. And like I said, I'm not on a flood plane. I realize, you know, I thought Brown Road was supposed to be widened at some point. Apparently that job was taken over by the highway department. They're known for their speed. So I don't know at what point Brown Road is going to be straightened. And at one point, Randy, I know we had talked about, once Brown Road was widened and straightened, that y'all would try to get to my issue. But since that job was put off to the highway department, now I'm just kind of getting left here in limbo. And I've had, I've had my own engineer come out, you guys. Someone has come out a few years ago to tell me what, or at least to give ideas of what can be fixed. I don't know what to do at this point, other than start taking matters in my own hands, start chopping stuff up, start, I don't know, I don't know what to do. But like I said, I'm tired of rebuilding my house over and over again. So, but I have a bunch of videos and pictures if you guys want that or need it. But yeah, I got years of them. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Next.
I'm sorry, can I get your last name again?
Mine? Longinnotti.
What was it?
I'll give out the rest of the name.
Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Duncan. I live at 307 Deering Drive in Fairway Valley. I approached the city council five years ago about this same problem that has still been ongoing since I talked to you back in 2020. We flood every time it rains. Not just once a year or once every other year, every time it rains. It has gotten worse since they've built more houses along the creek, along the golf course because they have built a levee and raised all these houses. But they did not increase the size of the drainage ditch for stormwater. It's still three foot wide. That's it. My biggest issue is that we continue to, one, let people build. I believe the last time I came in front of this council, I was requesting that you stop building on a corner lot across the street from us because before they built this house there, there was constantly water on there. It was never dry. It was always flooded. And the other night, at 11:50 something PM, I called 911. They called me back because I was concerned that they were going to get washed away. It was the deepest this water's ever been, deepest it's ever been. It was three feet from my back door. My house was an island surrounded by water, and it had nowhere to go. We allowed these people to build more houses along the creek, build up a levee so their houses were protected. But then it prevented our houses from draining properly. So our problem that we had before is now 100 times worse. Your 100-year flood zone is now a twice-a-year flood zone in our neighborhood. And the more you allow people to build subdivisions that drain into Osage Creek, the more we flood. Our DOT told me when I called to request information about drainage from 112 when they widened the highway outside of our subdivision, informed me that all the culverts that they put in will drain into Osage Creek. Which means it drains into our neighborhood. I asked you guys five years ago to help us. We need our drainage ditches expanded. We need people to stop building houses that prevent our subdivision from draining. And we need your support. We have families that live in our subdivision that were lied to when we bought those properties and told that we were not in a flood zone. I'm still told I'm not in a flood zone, but my property floods every time it rains. Because of some study that was done by an independent engineer. Not by you. I requested that you do a new study, but it's never been done. I'm a taxpayer, just like any other property owner in that subdivision. And I asked five years ago for someone to come and study and figure out how we can improve the drainage in this subdivision. Nothing was done. And then I was told, well, he's changed this property line and they're building these new things. He's going to have to improve the drainage ditch on the south side of the subdivision. That has never happened, ever. It is still the same as it was the day I moved in and was lied to that I was not in a flood zone. They allowed people to build houses in a floodway that prevents proper drainage throughout the whole subdivision. We need solutions, not just talk. This is great talk. I know some of you are different. You're not seeing people that were on this city council at the time that I spoke to you five years ago. But nothing has changed. I have videos and pictures of every single rainstorm that has created runoff and flooding since I've moved there. And I too will be just like this gentleman back here and unable to sell my home in the future if I decide to move because I can't be that person that lies on a seller's disclosure and say that there's no drainage problem. And then when I contact someone to give me an estimate to fix it, and I've had multiple, the first thing they say is, whoa, there's probably nothing you can do until the city has a better drainage plan. But at minimum, $30,000 just for a drywall. And there's still no guarantee it will work. Our drainage comes from Brown Road, Wellington. Everybody to the east of us drains to Fairway Valley. We need your help before someone dies. Because I was worried we were going to have a Texas on our hands the other night. I didn't go to bed till 3:45 in the morning because my house was an island. And I didn't see one of you there, not one of you. I saw firefighters there and I saw police officers there. And even 911 told me I had no way to escape because Highway 112 was closed. So if that happens, we don't even have a way to get out. How do you protect your citizens? We have children, elderly that live there. We need your help and we don't need it tomorrow or five years from now. And shame on me for giving up because I did. I just finally said, I give up, they won't listen. I should have been coming to every single city council meeting saying, what are you doing? What are you doing? And that's what I'm doing right now. I'm asking you as a city council, to whatever your budget is, find a way, fix this. If you want to keep continuing to let developers build more houses and pour more cement that drained Osage Creek, then you better start building that budget and fixing storm drainage in Cave Springs. Because eventually Cave Springs is going to be gone because we're all going to be underwater. And that's going to turn people away. We need your help. Help us, please. We need that help and we need you to stand up for us. Thank you.
Next.
Steve Dubellman, Brentwood. Yeah, I just wanted to come, I'm going to be pretty brief. I just wanted to give a different perspective of something I think, how to-
MC.
MC, yeah, you bet. Councilman MC is probably going to relate some to this. I'm a real estate broker and I live in that subdivision. And the thing I start thinking about is I'm sitting here and my next-door neighbor, and I'm affected as well. I'm right next door to her. What was happening in her backyard did the same things through my backyard. Every, she said that she's only had it twice. I've had it about four or five times where I'm having a literal river run through the backyard. Thankfully, our house is elevated. I haven't had the issues within the house. I feel for those who have, truly. Nonetheless, you know, I've got fencing damage. I've got water that is eroded a part of my land now. I'm going to have to try and figure out how to mitigate that, you know, myself, I guess. But the thing I started thinking about more intently, and I'm not, I originally came in here to talk about Brentwood. It sounds like I'm really talking about the city of Cave Springs, is the impression that is going to come with, hey, wait a minute, oh, Cave Springs, that's that area that floods. See, and that's not, we don't want that, especially as homeowners, as property owners. Because we all know what's going to happen to our property values as a result of that. And if property values go down, we also know, the next thing that's going to happen is tax revenue is going to go down. Because our property values are a part of where those dollars come in. I know there's other areas, but that's, you know, that's something it's going to impact. We start going the wrong way with this, we're going to end up with even bigger problems. So it's just, I just wanted to bring that up as something to be cognizant of. I'm sure you guys have. I appreciate the fact you guys started with prayer today. First time I've been to a meeting. God knows we all need the wisdom right now. And I pray for each one of you individually and collectively here because I know you guys got some tough decisions. But thanks for giving us the time to talk.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Rick Katsfi. I live in Brentwood. I was also, I lost two fences. One was the entry point, one was the exit when the river formed and came through. I have a background in meteorology, 30 years a meteorologist. And so I can give you a little bit of background of what happened on that night. The rainfall estimates that you're seeing or hearing are underestimated. About three years ago, when we had a flood that was, that went through most recently, I think it was three. I measured around nine inches of rain because I was able to go out and dump the rain gauge out and check it and then come back. This one was worse. And so as I was looking at the radar estimates from the weather service, I went through a couple sites. And they were estimating between one to two inches of rain had fallen in like the first 35 to 40 minutes. And it's like, man, we're already flooding. There's no way it was one to two inches. And so because we had the nine inches about three years ago and I saw the level of where it was on Pete's house, this went over that and it pushed all the fences over and knocked out a couple bushes that were in our yard, our landscape. So this one, I'm estimating between nine and 12 inches of rain had fallen in about an hour and a half to two hours of time. So it was overwhelming the system, we know that. We live in a hilly area, you know, the water's going to run and going to find its exit point. That happens to be in every valley that feeds the creeks. And so no surprise that we were where we were. But it was surprising to see the water as high as it was. I was like, wow, this is getting really serious. And when you start seeing the fences blow over in my yard, I'm a little higher up than the other guys are, it kind of surprised me. So there's a little bit of background of what, how the weather played out that night. And so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Anyone?
All right, guys, everybody here knows, I'm pretty sure I'm Hutch. Four years ago, I believe, we had a flood real similar, if not just as bad as the one we just had the other day. Four years ago, we asked-